We're live.
Good evening. I would like to call the Trotwood Madison City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, at five thirty P. M. To order. Ms. Allen, will you please call the row?
Yes. Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Miss Moore?
Yes, the meeting has now been called to order. Uh, Madam Vice President, can you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance and everybody is on you? Thank you.
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any change? Addenda additions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Miss Moore?
Yes, the agenda now has now been adopted. Uh, Ms. Allen, do we have any community comments tonight?
I do not have any.
Thank you. Then we'll move right into the consent agenda. Item A is approval of resolution for payment of regular wages to classified employees. Item B is approval of meeting minutes from September third, twenty twenty, special meeting September third, twenty twenty, work session, September seventeen, twenty twenty, regular meeting. Item C is approval to accept donations for Madison Park and Westbrook Village. Item D is approval of student activity purpose statements and budgets. And item E is the approval of Catacalt Learning West LLC ancillary fund contracts from Mother Maria Anna Brunner Catholic School. I need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We now have a motion and a second. Any questions? The only thing that I would like is we have our legal director with us, uh, Janet Cooper. I know there were some questions on item A. Can you just clarify the resolution of regular wages to classified employees?
Yes, item A is a resolution to pay regular wages to classified employees this year. Um, there is a statute in Ohio which requires employees to be paid for all time lost when schools are closed to students because of a pandemic. But the auditor of state has said that, um, best practice is for boards to approve that payment. And when he, when the auditor comes in to audit, they're going to be looking for that board resolution. So the districts that Bricker and Eckler represents, we have prepared these, uh, resolutions for. And the other thing is that, um, employees are working in a variety of classifications, doing what work needs to be done to support the remote instruction of students. And, uh, you will need, you will need them as, as you go back into, uh, to schools. And if you don't pay your employees, they'll, uh, they'll find other jobs and they won't be available to you when you need them to serve students. So there's a practical reason to it, and then there is a, an auditor reason for doing this. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do, I do have one. Um, if, if this is something, um, that is, I guess mandated per the auditor, why does he leave it up to the districts to pass a resolution in order to fund it?
It's not mandated by the auditor. What the auditor said was that it was best practice for districts to do that. And then at audit time, no question, but that the board intended to pay its, um, classified employees.
So the first part of what you said, was it, was it either something from the, uh, from the O R C that mandates it?
Yes, there is a provision in the Ohio Revised Code which says employees will be paid for all time lost when schools are closed to students dur- doing during, uh, pandemic, among other reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the row?
Yes. Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Miss Moore?
Yes, motion passes. The, uh, consent agenda is approved. Next item up is board report, and there's only one item here is approval to appoint Mr. Norman Scares to serve as our district OSBA delegate. And this action is up for action. Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Uh, um, abstain?
Okay, um, now, Mr. Scares, you know what's on the floor, right?
I do, I just don't know if I'm allowed to vote on.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Is it yes or abstain?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I lost my track. Um, Mrs. Bozeman, I said, um, Miss Moore?
Yeah. Did you, I think you missed somebody. Did anybody get missed?
I did.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But yes.
So, motion passes unanimously. So congratulations, Mr. Scares.
Thank you.
For OSBA. Thank you. Next item up is treasurer's report. Item A is approval of September twenty twenty financial reports. Ms. Allen?
Yes, we did have a, um, very good, um, finance committee meeting today with Mr. Scares and Mrs. Jeter Freeman. Um, we went over an entire finance packet that is available to the board members under the administrative tab if you want to look at that. But tonight we will, um, um, look at three of the, um, reports. The first one is our cash reconciliation. And, um, this is for, um, well, at the top, bank statements, um, two million dollars for the P and C general count. Our investment balances, um, total thirty million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventeen cents. That together equals thirty-two million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five, I'm sorry, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. There were outstanding checks and adjustments that totaled six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. If you subtract that from the, um, total bank and investment balances, you do, um, equal exactly, um, thirty-one million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. So therefore, your variance bank to book is zero. The next, um, schedule is, um, our Form SM two that indicates the revenue and expenditures for the month of September. Um, the revenue, um, you can see at both monthly actual and fiscal year-to-date actual. Uh, that is also the same for the expenditures total for the month, um, monthly actuals and fiscal year-to-date. And then at the bottom of the report, it does indicate your ending cash balance, and that ending cash balance is twenty-seven million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And outstanding purchase orders are three point seven million dollars. The last, um, schedule is September, September checks over one thousand dollars. The finance committee, um, did review that report, and there were two questions, um, for two individuals. And one of the individuals was Anne Blankenship. Uh, that was, um, for check nine five four six seven and Nicole Ferguson, nine five four six six. And both of those checks were for tuition reimbursement for those two. And so there were no other questions in terms of the, um, checks over a thousand dollars. And that is all I had to report this evening for finances.
Okay, well, thank you. I need a motion to accept treasurer's item A, approval of September twenty twenty financial reports?
So moved.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
I don't have any question. I do have a comment. Um, I, I would really like for the board to possibly sit through, um, a retreat of some kind to discuss the district's deficit spending. Um, and, you know, I realize that a lot of these things are common practice amongst districts. Um, but like I told Ms. Ms. Allen today in our, in our finance committee meeting, just because it's something that we, we typically do isn't, it's not necessarily something that we should continue doing. Um, and basically, we can't continue to make a practice of spending more money than we are taking in. Um, so I would like for us to, uh, at least have a, an in-depth conversation about that as well as the possibility of, um, taking a look at some of the liabilities that the district owns as well. That's it.
I think that's a great idea. What we will do, we will be having an upcoming retreat. Um, the twenty-fourth did not work, that's why I didn't get that. We've asked changes and, uh, want to make sure that we can coordinate that with the superintendent as well. So we'll stand by, we'll have Kim send out a couple of different dates for all of us. And at that retreat, Mr. Scares, I, I think it warrants having some conversation. So we'll be doing that in the very near future. You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the row?
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Miss Moore?
Yes. Motion passes, approval of September twenty twenty financial reports. Next item up is the superintendent's report. And there's only one item there, and it's the personnel agenda. Dr. Cosby, please.
Okay, hello, everyone. I hope everybody's had a good day today. It's felt like it's been a very long day, and I think the rain outside didn't help too much with that. Um, I'd like to go through this personnel agenda. A one would be a recommendation for the following certified resignations or retirement. A two is a recommendation for the following certified corrections, and you all have these in front of you. A three is a recommendation for the following certified twenty-first century positions for the twenty twenty-one school year. A four is a recommendation for the following certified positions to be used on an as-needed basis for the twenty twenty-one school year. A five is a recommendation for the following certified supplemental positions for the twenty twenty-one school year. And that's it.
Um, I need a motion to accept superintendent item, uh, A for the personnel agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been second. Any questions? Concerns or comments? Yeah, and what I've noticed, I, I'm, I'm sorry, go right ahead, Mr. Scares.
I, I did have a question. My, um, laptop just died on me. I'm trying to bring my agenda back up, so give me a second. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm looking at this too, because I had a question as well. But I don't see it. By the way, guys, everything that's bolded is something that we're seeing for the first time, because this was not on the work session agenda.
I can hear you, Beth, and Dr. Davis is also on the line.
Yes, okay, I'm looking at the... Hold on. I'm looking at the, um, uh, what is this called?
Personnel agenda?
Not the personnel agenda, the explanations, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, you're looking at the clarification forms?
Yes.
Okay, for the supplementals, correct?
Yes. What is the difference between the choir and the voice?
The vocal and the singers?
Correct, yes.
All right, do you have those, um, documents in front of you? I mean, I can sort of read through the differences listed. Okay. So on the vocal, tells what the goals are for the vocal, are to develop technique and vocal ability to perform a varied repertoire of songs when expressing students', um, personal relevance and interests when expressing themselves through music, to examine how people from different backgrounds and cultures use and respond to music. Those are, um, high school music standards that are guiding that work. Okay, and then on the, you, on the singers, the goal for high school singers is to learn about music theory and develop vocal technique in order to sing more complex music for multiple performances throughout the year. They will prepare to participate in music post-secondary. Those are, I guess, students who are interested in continuing in music. Um, and by continuing, use multimedia, including media arts and music technology to create, analyze, rehearse, um, present and record music of a variety of styles.
Okay, think, things like that can't be, you, you can't knock two birds with one stone?
I'm not a music teacher. So, um, I, what is, what is it specifically that you're, you're suggesting that maybe both of these things could happen at one time?
Uh, it, 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 that's, that's what it seems like to me. I mean, is there some reason why it couldn't?
Well, again, I don't want to speak for a music teacher. I, I, you know, I am not a music teacher. So this was something that, um, was asked to be filled out. It has been approved, um, on the level of the school. I understand that these have happened prior to my getting here. So, um, I imagine that they are two different things that are going on. Could they be done at the same time? Maybe a question that can be asked, um, of the school advisor at, at a, at a point. But, um, they, they're listed separately in the negotiated agreement.
Okay. Um, it, it just, for me, it looks like we're, uh, paying somebody twice to do fundamentally the same thing. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
Just, like, like I said, I, you know, I don't have an exact answer. It could be the same as someone may say, well, if we're playing, you know, basketball, does it matter if they're in the ninth grade or tenth grade? You know, I don't, I don't know. So that is a, a good discussion for us to have when it's time for, um, for us to look at this at another time. But at, at this point, my understanding is she's, these have been put in through the, um, way that we had said we would do it. And I appreciate your questions, though, and I do think that we can work to get those answered. Yeah, that is a very good question. Um, I just don't, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Scares, and we want to make sure we don't have duplication of services, because when the auditors ask us every year, we are asked about how we spend money. We want to make sure that we are clear and that there aren't things that are being duplicated and done it, at, which are not anything different from one from the other. So I, I can understand where you're coming from, uh, Mr. Scares, as well. Uh, my question, and I, and I know that this is something we've done in the past, but I want, I want to share this. And Dr. Cosby, please help me with this particular piece. I know that we've had, th- these are things that have happened in the past. It's been standing, standard operating procedures. However, we're in a pandemic, so we're not operating as we normally would. As a matter of fact, when we were cut short last year, everything came to a screeching halt. And there were things that, you know, honestly could not be done. There were no outcomes to, to, to happen based on how we were shut down. Well, now we have the opportunity to have outcomes and good outcomes with our students. What I am, um, what I'm proposing is, Mr. Scares made a comment earlier about spending and going into deficit spending. We have over four hundred and, four hundred thousand dollars in supplementals. Is that correct, Ms., um, Allen?
Yes.
Okay, four hundred and six thousand dollars that we're spending?
Yes.
Okay, and that is operating as we always have. Well, now we're not operating as we always have, and frankly, we don't know what the governor's going to come up and do next. And also, we don't know if things are actually going to happen for the, from the most part, based on the climate that we're dealing with. I would ask that supplementals, um, have, and that's every club. I'm not just picking out one of them, but just the way we have our meeting and we have meeting minutes, there should be some form of documentation along the lines of minutes, attendance, um, progress. There, you know, I'm going to be honest, I know there, there's been challenges sometime getting kids to join some of the groups. And if we have one student in a supplemental, then we need to look at how we might want to change that to recruit other students, so we're not paying six thousand dollars and have one student one day a month, okay?
Hey, Ms. Allen, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yes.
Ms. Allen, with the exception of the money that we've received, um, for the pandemic, how much are we overspending by?
Um, the deficit spending?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, through, through, through September was one point two million dollars at this point. Yes, one point two million at this point, and I explained at the finance committee, we have not gotten our real estate taxes. So that will put us in the black for a couple of months. And then as we, um, go toward the end of the year or the beginning of the year, our deficit spending will, um, start again. So when, when we do file the November, um, I could give you more specifics, because then the FY twenty twenty actuals will be posted, and then we can see what our budget looks like from FY twenty-one through FY twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow, yeah, and, and for that very reason, we have to have accountability on everything that we do and how we spend money. So, Dr. Cosby, what I'm asking is, with our supplementals, is that something that you could make sure that the board gets along the lines of reporting on how well we're doing and how well it's received and, and the benefits for our students?
I think I'm freezing, or my computer, or you, you guys. But, um, yes, we could make sure that, are you hearing me? Everybody?
I am.
Um, yes, of course, we can make sure that attendance is taken, that we can put some things in place to, um, you know, like you said, find out what the kids are most interested in and what they're attending and things like that. Um, so that is no problem. We had a process this year for the way we did it. We can develop a process for how we move forward. I, I do have one question. Um, when you talked about the deficit spending, Mr. Scares, you said with the exception of the money that we received, um, for COVID, so I, what, Janice, what does that mean? That money that we have, so you said we're one point two million, so...
That's general, just, that is just general fund, so we're not talking about any grant, um, money. So that was just general fund. And we normally just talk about general fund in terms of, um, you can see deficit spending when we file the, um, different five-year forecast. So that was just general fund money. So when we talk about grants and the COVID dollars, the cares dollars that, that we're getting, those are, um, helping us pay for pandemic-related items.
Right, and we got that money because there was an understanding that if we use their general fund money, we would, of course, end up in, in bad shape. So I'm, I mean, I think that some of that was taken into account. But I'll be excited to, to learn more about it when we have our retreat. Um, and yes, we will put into place, um, the types of things that you asked about for next year moving forward. Absolutely. Another concern or question I have, and, you know, I'm going to direct this to the CFO. And on, on some of these, and, you know, we, we asked for the verification forms, and we got them, and they looked very good. Um, as a matter of fact, they were very complete. But I noticed there were a few that actually had to be determined. So my question is, and my concern is, to be determined is based on if it can actually happen through the year. Some of these are second and third semester, we don't know. But for some reason, if it doesn't happen, is there some sort of qualifier that we can put on, on our supplementals? We can vote on these, and, and this is all great and good and wonderful. However, with the qualifier for the ones that said to be determined, meaning it's not determined, we don't have any suspense dates of when and when it's going to happen or if it's going to happen, putting the qualifier that for some reason, if it doesn't happen, then the district doesn't have to pay for services that were not rendered. But if it does happen, there's not a problem. Ms. Allen?
So yes, I, I did look further into that, and there were, um, a couple to be determined, and that related to, for instance, Muse Machine performances. But on that, um, Miss Moore, it did not say that, that, that the, um, the, um, club would not happen. It just said the performances, uh, may not happen. And so, um, on that particular, um, supplemental, um, she did indicate that they wo- would be meeting still, but those, um, Muse Machines performances weren't going to be, um, happening. So I, I thought the to, to, to be determined was the whole supplemental, and it was not the entire supplemental. It was just things that, um, were part of that particular supplemental. And the Muse Machine was part of that, so they didn't know if those performances would happen or not.
So if they're only doing part of the function, shouldn't they only receive part of the compensation?
Well, she's, she's doing all of the function. She's preparing the kids to do the Muse Machine. But Muse Machine itself, the performances, they may not be able to perform from, um, in those performances. But she still, um, will, um, complete that supplemental. So I, I did look at that a little differently, um, this a- this, this afternoon. But to answer your ques- question, President Moore, obviously, if they don't do it, we wa- we don't pay it. So obviously, um, you know, we do need documentation to make sure that those, um, what they say that they were going to do, they do, and then we will pay them at that time.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so you're making clarification on that particular item, which was a to-be-determined that what's to be determined is they may not have performances, live performances, or field trips, or any type of exploratory, ancillary, in-person, anything? And that's to be determined, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so when we do anything, I mean, any particular club, is there an end goal? Like if we do robotics, right? And we're doing robotics, and we're going to compete, and we're getting ready to compete because we're all part of robotics and that whole organization? So it's, it, it's a complete start to finish. So I, I'm, I'm a little confused about what you are telling me now about the to be determined. If, I mean, if we're, if it happens, I mean, we'll have dates that it's gonna happen. And then, great, we got this team. But if it, we know that it's not gonna happen this year, I mean, are you saying that that's just half of what the organization is about?
My understanding is that the Muse Machine does plan to release some information out and they may be providing some, um, opportunities for the kids to see some plays and things of that nature. Um, I, I think we've already said that if nothing happens or if, you know, it's not what they thought it was gonna be, then I guess we can address it at that point. I think for now, what Janice was saying is we have no reason to think that it's not gonna move forward as stated. We, all of them are like that, all of them, you know, they haven't happened yet. And we're saying we're gonna take the information and find out, you know, were you able to do this? Because this is a pandemic, it's new, we don't know. But we ask them to give us your best ideas about how you could make this happen for our kids and what they've done. And if they can't make it happen, then I think that we address it at that point.
And I'm just, I'm asking because now many of them were not TBD. There were just a few. The other ones said they were happening and they were doing that. That's what stood out for me.
Hey, Janet?
Yes.
What is, and, and I don't know, I don't know if you can release, but what's happening in other districts around supplemental contracts?
Um, well, they're going forward as best they can at this point.
Okay.
We have a process in our collective bargaining agreement, which allows at the end of a school year for there to be an assessment as to how each one of those, uh, went. And then the board can decide-
Yes, don't look anyway.
What do we want to do next year in terms of supplementals? And I think you should, uh, look at that at the end of this school year and see how these all turned out and decide what you want to do for next year. But most of these have already begun for this year.
And that can happen separate from the, um, bargaining agreement, correct?
It's actually described in the bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Uh, I have a comment.
Yes.
One, one of the, one of the things that, uh, i- i- in, it may not be the most, uh, fiscally or financially responsible approach, uh, in, in, in light of a lot of things. But, um, I'm thinking that in, in, in some cases, there may be some activities that might have a small number of people or a smaller number than we would like. And, um, uh, I, I'm, I'm thinking that's something that maybe we need to work on in a workshop or something. But to, to look at, uh, uh, offering opportunities, whether we have a, a really large number of people participating or not, I, I see some value in that. And, and us having a well-rounded, uh, 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 program and offerings for our students. And, and I'm saying that, for example, there were some years for our Coach Cross Country where it didn't matter what we did. We had cookouts every week, we had little raffles, we had little lotteries where we were giving away, uh, 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 things, stuff like that. We, i- it was like pulling teeth to get, uh, a, a seven-person team for the boys, the girls, the, the JVs and the freshmen to run cross-country. Uh, I, I don't think that that made the program any less valuable for those that did participate. And, and so I know it's, it's a tough thing because you're trying to balance the finances with, um, with the participation. But I think it's something maybe we need to sit down and, and really look at and try to come up with some type of, uh, uh, I don't know, formula or something to kind of work with that. The accountability piece, uh, I, I think that's very reasonable. Because sometimes, um, maybe there's a need, i- i- if, if there's not a lot of folk participating or, or if it doesn't seem to be something that kids are interested in, it may not be because they don't have an interest. It may be that they're just not being approached or solicited in a way that gets them to want to look at something different. And I, I think we, in, in a previous discussion when we were talking about vocational ed and the first offerings that were being, uh, uh, discussed were the real traditional and typical kind of things. I don't wanna go into business, nothing. Sometimes i- it's like teaching kids to eat and, and, and expand their dietary experience. Sometimes you have to offer them things they may not particularly be interested in because they may not even know they have an interest in it until they're exposed to it. So it is, it's, it's a tough balancing act, but I just wanted to throw that out for consideration as we, uh, go through and, and look at these, uh, uh, and all the supplementals. Uh, because we wanna, well, I would, I know I want our, our, our school to have a well-rounded experience that's, that's, that makes things or provides offerings and, and availability of offerings to pretty much anybody who wants to come in. That doesn't necessarily mean you have a club of one person either. But to have things available and options available so that we don't just end up, uh, with, with just a handful of things that are kind of stereotypical, that, that, uh, our kids sometimes get boxed into either this or you're nothing in, in terms of activities. Does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
It makes a lot of sense, Angela, because a lot of these are ones that we've done for the last 15 years, but things have changed. I mean, I don't see anything that we're doing with coding. You know, I don't see anything that we're doing, you know, even more in-depth STEM. I mean, there's a lot that I see an opportunity for additional supplementals.
Yeah, I agree.
Getting our kids involved in. And that's why I said, you know, we have to be fiscally, uh, responsible, we have to. So if that means that we have a, an opportunity for kids and maybe nobody wants to be in it, I mean, frankly, and we've voted, yeah, we're doing it and we're paying to do it, but there's gonna be no outcome, okay?
Yeah, I understand.
Come together and say, how do we recruit kids? Maybe there's something else we can do. Maybe there's a way to combine things, like Mr. Scares talked about, the, the two supplementals, they're very similar. I mean, they're very sim- maybe there's an opportunity to add to it or, or, I don't know.
And, and I, and you know, the, 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 the two subjects that you, the two, uh, uh, skill sets that you just mentioned are, are ones that come to mind with me, uh, right away in terms of, uh, uh, low numbers, but, but I still think they're justified that we offer them. And that would be like coding and, uh, any kind of STEM activities. Because a lot of kids probably don't do, I don't know anything about coding, I don't like it, I don't even wanna do STEM, I don't, I ain't good at math, I don't like science and that kind of stuff. And, and a lot of times, those can be changed depending on who's in, in, in the leadership role in that and how they present it and what the, and how they offer it. It can make it something that our students will start to embrace because it is necessary. And analogy I'm using like with the vegetables, you know, uh, well, I don't like peas and spinach, I don't like green stuff. Well, y- you don't stop, stop serving it because they say they ain't gonna eat it. Because if you put it out there and if you present it in a way that's more palatable or more attractive, then they will try it. And most of the time, as we know, a lot of stuff the kids say they don't like, once they get into it, they love it. But it, it's, sometimes it's, it's difficult to find a way to get them to try it first. So that was my comment.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I do have a comment I wanted to throw out. I think we are all saying the same thing, actually, Ms. Moore, Mr. Scares, Dr. Cosby, um, you all three are definitely saying the same thing in that there needs to be accountability. If they're not gonna do what they say they're gonna do or if they can't do it based on the pandemic, then they're just, we can't pay them. I think that's what even Dr. Cosby said, we just, we're not gonna be able to do it, you know? So, um, I don't think, I think we're all saying the same thing. You've turned in your, your paperwork, um, it says to be determined, e- everything is to be determined, quite frankly. And, um, if it can't be done, then why would we pay something that can't be done? You know, I think that's pretty common.
Yeah, and, and Ms. Bozeman, you're absolutely right. But I know that sitting in these meetings, we need clarification. Because once we vote on things, and, and you know this, and there's no conversation around how that works, we can't go back and say, oh, we knew it might not be happening. We might, we knew that it may just to be determined, but yet instead, we've already made a commitment that way. So I'm asking for just clarification for the record. And I think that's what Mr. Scares is asking for as well, that there's a clear understanding. Um, you know, it was completely out of everybody's hands last year. We, we voted in October before October 1st, it was completely out of everybody's hands and we had no supplementals. But yet and still, we were, um, you know, we, we held to the commitment, uh, from the vote to have them. But nobody went back and said, oh, we didn't have any, can we, can we retract that? No, we can't. And that is why I think the conversation is happening. It's, it's, you know, it's, I guess, assumed, but what I find is we can't assume anything in what we do. We have to clarify.
Yeah. You know, my comment, and I think I've said this before, so that's why I didn't really have a comment, is that this is the opportunity for our teachers and staff that have stepped up and say, hey, I can do this. Then the board is expecting deliverables on what they said they could do. Because this is a time, frankly, where a lot of students that may not have participated in person might prefer to participate virtually. So I think for myself, what I'm expecting is that those, uh, leaders, those coaches, uh, or academics or whatever, will be aggressive in going to recruit students to be a part of this because they need it, especially if they're not the ones out there, you know, playing sports or doing something else. This is an opportunity for them too, to learn. And I think some of the staff might find that when they're doing these virtual, um, teachings and programs and meetings, the students can be the leader in helping them to set them up and create breakout rooms and even partner with other schools. So it's a huge opportunity here for our students and our staff. So that's what I'm expecting. But I agree with, uh, each of you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman. I appreciate everybody's comment. And again, just clarification. So Superintendent, what I'm hearing you say is if, if those things can't be performed, then we revisit it along the lines of how we handle it financially? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that we're gonna say that for all of our supplementals. The staff has said what they can do and we're gonna give them that opportunity to do the best they can at it. And if they find out that they cannot do it, then we will revisit and see how much was actually able to be accomplished. And if we have, um, Janet, the ability to then, um, work on that as far as what pay they get, then we can do that at that time. But, um, yeah, I, and I think that people understand that. You, you're the staff and you don't produce a yearbook, you wouldn't expect to be paid, you know, full out for a yearbook that didn't happen.
Those will have to take place in discussions with the collective bargaining representative. That's, that's handled. Now, certainly next year, you can decide whether you want to continue supplementals based on what the performance was this year. And that's something that should be done before the school year starts and before the supplemental work has begun. So that would happen i- at the end of the school year, when there's an assessment of how each supplemental worked during the year, how many students participated, what activities were available for them, how many meetings were there? Then you look at all of that and you assess, what are we gonna do for next year?
So that means that our, um, teachers are gonna have to be mindful of that and be sure that they're taking attendance and turning that, all of that information in because that will determine if we're even gonna be able to do supplementals for next year. So they should really be responsible and mindful of that information.
Absolutely.
And this year, if I hear you correctly, is we're just gonna move forward and monitor it. So whether they have outcomes or not, whether they can do it or not, whether it's performed or not, we're still going to pay for the services that we vote on. I mean, I'm asking you because we, that it's, it's something we're gonna move forward this year and monitor. So whether it happens or not, we're voting on it as it is. We're not gonna go backwards. And we're not gonna, you know, sometimes through the year, it's say, oh, gosh, you know, we, it couldn't happen and what does the pay look like, you know, they only performed half? And we're not going backwards that way. Is that correct?
We have a collective bargaining agreement that we need to follow at this point.
Okay, and it says that we cannot do that, correct?
It says that once these, well, it's what it, what, for where we are right now, uh, at the middle of October, is that these things have begun. So the time to be having this conversation is earlier in the year, when we assess what happened over the prior year and what do we want to do for the next year. Now, we can also look at the end of this year at exactly what was accomplished in it, in each of these, uh, supplementals. And should there be, uh, an adjustment in pay? But that cannot be a unilateral decision of the board. That would have to be something that we would negotiate with the teachers union. And all districts are, are in that same position.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
President Moore, I just wanted to say from a CFO's perspective, we want to hold everyone who's getting paychecks accountable to what they're doing. And so I just want the board to know that we are holding people accountable. We are not just paying people for nothing. So everyone needs to be held accountable, not just the supplemental piece. So I just wanted to say that from the CFO's perspective.
And I, yeah.
Allowing me to say that.
And I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Being that, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll? I can't hear you.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
No, we can't afford it.
He said no.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And, and Ms. Moore?
I'm going to say, I'm gonna say what we, that, uh, as long as we have the documentation to substantiate that people are doing the services and that the board has an opportunity to review those, and that our law director has an opportunity to go back and, into negotiations if those things are not done, um, to make some changes along the lines of the compensation. Then my answer would be yes. Okay, thank you. Given that, motion passes. Next item is discussion items and updates, virtual learning updates. And I'm gonna kind of put some of these together. We have the re-entry plan as well. Dr. Cosby, please.
Yes. Um, this is good news, very exciting, um, information I have to share with you about virtual updates. We talked about how some students, and I know Mr. Andrews mentioned this, tend to do well, um, virtually, whereas maybe they might not have so much when they were in the classroom. And as you all know, we've been taking around our virtual superstar posters and putting them out. And, and just recently, um, a mother was so excited that her son received one because he was struggling, he, um, was really having a tough time. And when he received that, because he has been doing so much better at home on his computer, she was really pleased with that. So our virtual, um, learning continues to get better and better. I have a couple of things that I would like to share with you that have happened in response to what it is we're doing. The first thing I want to tell you about is last Friday, October 9th, Lisa Minor and two of our teachers presented to the county districts on best practices for using, um, Modern Teacher for doing, uh, the program that we've been doing. And that's an invitation, you know, they got invited to participate. And, um, they did such a great job there that they've been asked, so we've been asked, Trotwood has been asked to present for Central Ohio ESCs. So that's, you know, a much broader area. They've asked for us to send, and someone, a principal actually, to represent us on this blended learning. And so Mr. Gibson will be doing that to represent the district. So I, I'm saying it to say, we would not be getting these invitations and these opportunities if we weren't really doing a great job- if we weren't really doing a great job at it. One little story I'll tell you that's sort of interesting is one of the people in the audience had asked the question about, well, tell me more about what you're doing. What does it look like? And so the man who's like the head of it gave this long explanation about what it was like. And and the person turned to him and said, no, I want to hear from Trotwood what they're doing. So, I mean, we we are really doing a great job with this, with our virtual learning. We will, as you know, have some students who will remain virtual. And I'll talk to that a little bit more when I get more into the reentry. I also wanted you to know that we've been involved through Ms. Minor and teachers. And she has some teachers with her in her presentations. She's been doing three one-hour discussions on blended learning and how we did the web design and all of that. And this is from people across everywhere. There was a man from London in the group. So this is, you know, primarily across the United States for sure. And then there are some international people who have also been getting on. And the two teachers who were with Ms. Minor when they did this presentation did such an excellent job that they've been asked to go on the road with the man who's leading Modern Teacher. So our teachers have taken to it. We've already acknowledged before in our meetings that every teacher is not at the same space. They all started at a different place. But the fact that we continue to improve, we continue to monitor what's happening in our classrooms, and we will continue to do that. And I guess what I'm saying is I have so much faith that as long as we continue to maintain these high standards, our teachers will continue to to read to reach them. And that's what they're doing with their students. They're holding them to high standards and our students are gonna also benefit. So that's my virtual update. Things are, you know, continuing to improve. And again, I'm not dismissing the fact that we have some teachers who still are trying to figure this out and not give too many assignments. That has been brought up. It's not just us. That's happening everywhere. It is being worked on. So when we talk about reentry, now is where I can start to talk a little bit about that type of information. We are preparing our teachers even more because this is gonna be totally different. Right now, they're all teaching one group of students. And those are the students who are all virtual. When we come back blended, they will have basically three different things going on. They'll have those four days where they'll have students in their classrooms. They'll have, if you'll remember, half of the group, two days, Monday, Tuesday. The other half, Wednesday, Thursday. These students will go home for three days. And then on Friday, they'll they'll train and they'll work and they'll plan. The teachers will while the students are at home. But they have to engage those students. So they have to work with the in-class students. They have to work with the students for the three days that they'll be home, you know, doing primarily work that they are getting from their playlist and that the teachers have already prepared for them. And they still have students who are all virtual. So to accommodate those students and the wishes of our parents, what we have done is we're going to have, schools will end one hour early. They'll start at the same time. They'll end one hour early so that the teachers can then interact personally with their children who are at home. And this is one of the ways that our other districts have found to be the best way to handle when they have, you know, we're the last ones to go in or next to the last. I think Harrison is not gonna go in. But we're the last ones to go in of those people deciding to. And so I do have information, you know, and the rest of us do, that helps inform our decisions. And so that one is a way that we didn't want to use a third party. We wanted to use our teachers. That's what our families have gotten used to. So we made that available to them. The survey results came out just like we thought they were, pretty much 60-40. 60% of the students seeing that they would come, want to come in, and 40% of the students remaining. Westbrook Village was a little bit different. They were more 50-50. As far as preparation is concerned for that, I'll just say quickly, we've had an hour-long PD for each of our buildings just to have their questions and answers app answered by our expert on virtual blended learning, on this blended. And I went into each of those. I think I might have missed one, but I went to four. And the teachers are excited. They're asking excellent questions. They are actually learning from one another even as they talk for that amount of time. So I feel very confident that they are gonna be ready. But we still continue to support them. So they will also be getting two hours of PD each week on on Fridays. That is about the blended learning. So that's another opportunity for them. And along the way, we do still have our PD days and things of that nature. Now, as far as operations and preparation is concerned, I did ask Mr. Howard if he was willing to speak tonight. And he said, of course, he's looking forward to it. So, Mr. Howard, could you come on?
Well, well, I'm actually not looking forward to it, but that's 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 okay.
Come on, Mom, I was you know.
Good evening, everyone. As far as the standpoint of of what what we've been working on, actually, since since probably June, is retrofitting the building with a variety of different safety measures, health and safety measures that have been recommended by the by the Public Health Department, Public Health Day in Montgomery County, as well as using the using the CDC guidance for returning to school and just some general other best practices that we've picked up from some of the districts that have been in so far. So our buildings have all been retrofitted with Plexiglas and Glass Shield, excuse me, plastic shields in all of the common areas. There have been hand sanitizing stations installed throughout all of the buildings at a variety of different, what we would call flow traffic points. We've installed one-way traffic arrows in all of the main thoroughfares in the district. There are air arrow flows for all of the main traffic points in the in the in the in the common hallways, as well as the academic wings. There's signage, six-foot signage throughout the district. Just whatever we could do to ensure the 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 well-being and safety of of our folks to the best of our ability. We've also invested in a upgrade to our air filtration system. And today, we delivered probably over 300,000, 300,000 pieces of PPE to each building, to all of the buildings collectively today as well. And that will be just distributed amongst all of the all of the buildings and all of the staff members. Each teacher desk will be retrofitted with with sneeze guards. Students will have mobile sneeze guards, K-5, pre-K through 5, that they will be able to utilize. All students will be given the opportunity to have a mask if they do not have their own. We're gonna encourage them to wear their own. But if they do not have a mask as they enter the building, we will be able to provide a mask for them. So we think we are in a pretty good place, a pretty sound place with regards to what we've done operationally. The building levels will manage the the day-to-day. But from the global standpoint of of what the district has done operationally, we have used best practices, used the guidance. And we feel we are in a good place with regards to that.
Thank you. I also want to remind everyone, because I know that I to those people who are, you know, on the call right now. But our plan did go out. We have a very detailed plan. It's on our website. I know that are we getting everyone to the website? But it was also mentioned on the DTN that we had posted our plan. And so that was another way to drive people through that. We also are doing, of course, one-call nouns and things like that. We often use or be trained on a new program that will allow us to communicate with all parents in the same way very easily. So that will definitely help our ability to communicate everything that's going on with our families. We are understanding that our staff, a lot of them are struggling with this whole idea of going in. They're they're listening to the news. They're hearing what, you know, everyone else is hearing. But as you all know, in all the other school districts have went back in. So far, there are, and and I have these numbers written someplace, but not right in front of me. But there are thousands, as you know, or there are 76,000 K-12 students throughout our area, throughout Montgomery County. And in our county, there are 173 cases right now of COVID. 100 are students and 73 are staff. And Jeff Cooper from the Health Department said the majority of those did not happen in school. So even though, you know, we see that our numbers are still growing and on, there's still a belief that we're doing the right things in our buildings. And we have no reason to think we will not do the right thing in our buildings, just as the others are. So we are taking into account and we are trying to be able to answer to our our teachers to get their questions answered. I have sent out a notice today letting them know that I'll be meeting with them so that they can ask any questions that they have. But we are trying our best to communicate because I think that information will make them feel more safe and secure once they know everything that we have going on in place for them as far as the operations piece is concerned and when they feel as confident as possible with what they're gonna do. But as I've said before, they they have really stepped up and and I'm sure that that's what we're gonna see happen once they get in. I've said it before and I will end with this now. It's, you know, we're very nervous before we start something. But once they get in, that conversation is gonna change about how can we help our students. We're gonna start talking more and more about teaching and learning. So that's my update. Next, we have the Black History Curriculum update. And so I've asked Ms. Minor if she would take care of that for me tonight, and she agreed.
Lisa, you're on, Mia.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Cosby and board members, for the opportunity to present tonight. And I just want to make sure you can see the screen as I present and and it's showing up. And so what I'd like to do is share with you an update on where we are with creating a comprehensive African-American history program. So now, more than ever, we know it's important with the state of the world and things that are happening right here in the United States. We want to make sure that our students have an opportunity to develop, to be developed through all of our curriculum as critical thinkers. But we know that African-American history would be meaningful and relevant to our population as well as those outside of of the culture. So research what we're doing. These are the things that we're working on right now. We're researching a comprehensive African-American curriculum models. And we're looking, actually, several states. There's Florida, New Jersey, a couple of states have comprehensive programs in place right now. So we're looking at it from preschool all the way to 12th grade. What are they doing? What does that look like? And so we're investigating other districts. We're identifying and categorizing the historical content, which for African-American history is very extensive. But we're dividing it up for grade level appropriateness. And we're reviewing what resources we have right here in the district that we can use and embed into our curriculum. And so what I have are samples of where we are with developing the curriculum and by grade band. So for grades pre-K to 2, and I won't read it all, but you can see this, the beginning will focus a lot on music, the arts, the basic beliefs, customs of African-American experience embedded into the curriculum. And we have some resources that we've already started using this year that I'll share a little later. In grades 3 through 5, it'll, the focus will be on historical and physical development of Ohio's African-American history and locally here in Trotwood and in in the Miami Valley region with a focus on biographies, timelines, critical events, science, literature, technology, all of that. Grades 6 through 8, it gets more advanced. We definitely want to add in a lot of social justice and current events things that we do already have curriculum resources that can connect to that, broad geographic humanities, multicultural perspectives, real-life connections today will be at the focus. We we have a program in high school, but we're also looking at the comprehensive curriculum. So in grades 9 through 12, we have an African-American history course. And we have African-American literature right now that we're offering. The and here, the focus will be on the world classical historic, history of classical civilizations, including Africa, the importance of the contributions of African-Americans in language, social justice sciences, and then, of course, African-American literature. These are current currently as an elective. We do have an African-American history course that focuses on these contents. It goes all the way back from slavery to to modern history, actually. And so we're looking forward to developing more of a comprehensive where they'll have things before they get to the high school. One thing we had to add to our African-American history course at the high school is an online version. The version that our teacher was using was just hard textbook. So we did purchase e-dynamic learning that the kids will, in response to the COVID and online that they're they're using now. And so what are some other culturally responsive materials we have to support the African-American experience, the arts, and American literature? For grades K through 5, we have a comprehensive music-integrated history program that every music teacher has. And we use the books and the music and the videos for our After School 21st Century. We actually kicked that off last year. And this year, we've provided that curriculum to all music teachers because it's songs about Black history. What has happened with our study of online learning? And in the summer, we did a lot of book studies on cultural-relevant learning. And so these are, what I'm gonna show you next are actual samples of what's on the teacher's landing pages. So many of our elementary classrooms have online libraries that the kids can click and read the stories along, and that's happening now. We also added to our curriculum at the end of last year, News ELA, which has current African-American history, you know, real-time with current events and historical events for both social studies and English Language Arts. Our students have access to, and our teachers are using it right now. And it's for grades 4 through 12. So those are some resources that we have that will definitely be embedded into our comprehensive program once we have it totally complete. We're developing it now. These are also some pictures from our landing pages of culturally responsive literature, novels, and and links that are going on. We also have a formal class that our counselors are teaching at the middle school. And that's going on right now. And it's a multicultural studies class through Apex, which is one of our online curriculums. But it emphasizes perspectives of minority groups while allowing students from all backgrounds to better understand and appreciate race and culture. So it's like current events, experiences, and historical perspectives. And so our goal is to continue, we, you know, recognizing how advanced and rich the history is. This is our planning year that we're building. We're researching a lot of materials. And there's a lot of materials from the publishers being developed. But a lot of the resources we're kind of putting together and making sure it hits that timeline. Our goal is for it to become a required course to graduate from Trotwood, Madison City Schools. And building it from pre-K to 12, we know our students will have even more knowledge at when they get to the high school. So that course can even go deeper. So questions?
What's the timeline on implementation?
So we are implementing, as you know, the African-American history course. So we are implementing, as you know, the African American history course and literature course at the high school right now. Uh we are implementing the multicultural class at the middle school right now. We also have the African American curriculum being used with our music teachers, K through five. But what we we're working towards is rolling it out K, pre-K to twelve for next school year, where it will be a formal African American history course at the middle school and of course at the high school. And embedding African American history into our English Language Arts, continuing it in music and in social studies, K five. So right now, we're writing all of that into, and of course, we'll be revising and and adding that into actually our curriculum maps and everything this spring and summer. So we're in the research phase right now.
Um does, does that include, um so next year, does that include it being a requirement for graduation?
It would probably, we we try to make sure the timeline in the past. I'm thinking we wouldn't be able to require those graduates to get it because of the way their schedule is. But probably the twenty twenty-two class or twenty twenty-three, but they'll be.
I'm sorry, Lisa, I I would say that's something that the board would, you know, need to have a lot more discussion on, you know, because a required course can also be the thing that would stop a student from graduating. So we wanna have a big discussion about what that'll look like. And it's it's, it is a lot of work, Lisa's telling you right now, it's a, it's a lot to it. So um I I don't, I don't think we're at a position right now to say for sure, you know, that we would want that to be a requirement to graduate, you know.
No, uh uh that needs to be a requirement.
Well, that's something we can discuss, Mr. Scares.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Um one of the things I think uh maybe we can do now is allow the students to have, I don't know if we've allowed the students to have a voice in what's happening now. So for the students to have podcasts, Ms. Bozeman, I know, has one with her sons, and she's had it for a couple of months now. And it's on current issues and, you know, it's a rich conversation. But those are the kind of things, when I'm thinking, for our teachers to allow the students to use their voice and their skills in this virtual environment to have, we don't know what they're, let's allow them that um outlet, that opportunity uh to engage with each other, with other students, you know. Uh we talked about Ms. Minor um talking to someone from London. Our students can do that as well. We've really gotta stretch beyond where we are now.
Yeah, I agree. And you know, that came up, this week we did the week, the, all the buildings, we had trainings. The teachers even brought that up, you know, in this virtual world, what's the best way to have them collaborate, interact, um communicate? And maybe debates and discussions and panels? And maybe co- collaborating with other districts, outside of the state even. Um I think that's excellent. They have an opinion and they deserve for their voices to be heard about everything that's going on.
I agree.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Minor.
Oh, you're welcome.
Presentation. And I think that's, that's it for us.
Okay, um any questions, board? On the reentry, on virtual learning, or on the African American curriculum?
I have one on the lunches. How will lunches be served when the students go back?
Um, Mr. How?
Sure, sure, um we will, um, and I apologize for my camera. I'm trying to, trying to figure out how to reconnect it. But uh we we will move back into our traditional um um process for prepping lunches. But each building is going to create a um, a a process of 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 lunchtime where they utilize a variety of different spaces, some in the classroom, some in the um, some in the cafeteria. But uh the buildings will go back to the standard line prep. But we will be serving the lunches in a variety of different places. All of that, all of those details are in the works right now, uh working with the principals. I know the high school and the middle school, uh at this point, high school will be utilizing uh small, much smaller groups. But because they have that large cafeteria, they will be able to space students out. Um middle school is going to be uh serving lunches in the classrooms via a kiosk that we have, will be pushing through the hallways. Uh and then we are working to finalize for the uh the the three elementary buildings. We should have all that finalized by the uh, by the end of, uh, end of this week.
Thank you.
I do have a question, just more of a point of clarification um for myself as well. So the students who decide to be one hundred percent virtual, they will be on a different platform. They won't be on the same platform that they're on now. And then I guess the teachers will, I guess, uh communicate with them for, did you say an hour a day or an hour a week, or how will that work? But they, from what I understand, they won't be on the same platform that they're on currently, it won't be.
Yeah, they, yes, they will be on the same platform. Ms. Minor, would you like to explain what that's gonna look like a little bit more? But yes, they will be on the same platform.
Yeah, so the teachers, the what you currently uh see on the teacher landing pages and the playlist, all that will remain the same for our students. And we're able to do that because the training that they've received, it was specifically designed for uh kids going back and forth, whether virtual or in the classroom. So they, what they can do is assign, have remote learning days. And this is what you would do if you're here, but this is what the students do that are totally remote. And then here's the activities that are face-to-face or synchronous. Um in some cases, some teachers will have all, the whole group, the remote group and the, in class, interact. There'll be all types of um opportunities. It'll look different um with different rooms, but it will be the same platform. And that's the difference between us getting a third-party provider where it would've been totally different and continuing. A lot of our parents said, we wanna continue the way it is now, 'cause they like the way it looks.
And that's how I would wanna continue as well, but that wasn't the information I was given. I was told that um it wouldn't be the same. And uh it would probably be like on Apex or something. And so that is what.
Oh, no, and so that, we did discuss that initially. But based on parent feedback, and a lot of our teachers too, decided that that was not the case.
Okay, perfect.
So, yeah, but thanks.
One, one, I'm sorry, one question, Ms. Moore, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
And and maybe, I don't, I don't know if you'd be able to answer it or not. But d- does the community know, do families know that school starts in a couple weeks? For the most part? Are they aware?
Um, they should be. We have been announcing the twenty-six since we started this, the whole time. We were gonna be online for the first quarter. And then when second quarter started, October twenty-sixth, we were gonna um go in. So I do believe that the community should know, they had opportunity. And we've sent home, um actually, letters today went out. And we've sent out our plan, and this has been constant conversation. You can never communicate enough. And so if your question is, has it been communicated enough? There's, I would say, never enough. Of course, on the other hand, we did receive a letter where one lady said, please don't keep calling me. And she got calls from her teachers and all of that. And so it's very hard to um, you know, to please everyone. But we're trying our best and we really are trying to communicate this. And I, but I do believe that this information has been out from day one. And Mr. Scares, I, if I'm not mistaken, I think you've mentioned it quite a few times in our meetings. Aren't we going back second sema- second quarter? And and so I think that people, they're aware if they've been um on the website, talking with their teachers, you know, listening to us, and they're receiving a letter and they're receiving one-call-now messages. So we're gonna, you know, keep, keep pushing away at it to.
I did get a call for that, but what I was gonna say was, um, and I was glad to get the call. But what caused me to choose Blended for my son was that they said it was gonna be on Apex. Specifically, they said it's not gonna be what it is, it'll be.
See, I'm sorry, the call that you received said that?
Yes. That call out. Had it been, had they said it's gonna be what he already has, I wouldn't have said Blended. So I say all that to say, perhaps the number of students who are coming back would have been lower. I'm just throwing it out there.
Right, right.
Um if it had been clear, 'cause I mean, the person specifically said, I wanna make it clear to you, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be Apex. It's gonna, it's not gonna be what it is. So they specifically said the word Apex. And so that's what, so I was like, well, I don't want that, you know, I don't want that. I would want him to continue doing what he's doing. And so that's why I said, okay, blended, you know, so. So if that's happening, if that person called me and however many other parents and said, it's gonna be Apex, it's not gonna be what he has or she has, then they were like, they could've been like me and said, well, no, I don't want that. And so that could be a difference in your numbers, I'm just throwing it out there.
Right, well, Ms. Bozeman, the 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 good news about that is we can um, you know, revisit that for you and we can put that back out. Um, your son is at the high school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can, you know, put that back out there and and see. Because um our numbers, like I said, it did turn out to be sixty forty. And I I wondered that as well. I figured, when you're trying to think about what people are thinking, um I was thinking that they're trusting that we're gonna have the students safe, which is true. But um we did make that decision um quite a while ago. And actually, a call should have never come out that said Apex. Because that, um, Ms. Minor, do you remember that that happened? It's been now, you know, at least a few weeks, so that we've been talking.
Really great about everything else. I mean, they were like really kind and um supportive. And we feel that my child would be safe, which was all great. But they specifically, they were very um, very sure that I knew that it wasn't gonna be. And 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 they, that's what they actually thought. They were mis, I would say, misinformed because they were doing their best to give me the best information they had and to really let me know what was going on. So they didn't know, they literally thought it's gonna be Apex.
Okay, well, that's something that I will look into. Thank you for, you know, that.
I have a question along the lines of uh communication. Is this on our social media page as well? Do we have this on our Facebook page?
Um, is Ms. Ferris on? Ms. Minor, do you know if that's been posted?
Uh, it, um, Ms. Ferris, she manages the website. I think Mrs. Jordan Isaac manages the Facebook page. So she's probably on and can speak to it being on the Facebook page.
Ms. Jordan Isaac, are you there?
Hi, this is Ms. Mallory. I don't think Ms. Jordan Isaacs is on, but I can check the Facebook page right now just to verify if it's up. And if not, it can be up probably within minutes, I'm sure.
Yes, it can. That things get up.
Thank you. Because a lot of our families, they they communicate very differently. And Facebook is the real news, and they go and they check there. So not only that, but that information can be shared from page to page and student to student, parent to parent, very easily. And it's a great medium for, for what we're trying to accomplish along the lines of making sure that people understand and they know. And I I'm glad that um the virtual-only option is not Apex. I'm very, 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 very happy to hear that it's what they are already doing. And also, Lisa, I'm happy to hear that in some classrooms, teachers are being very creative where they're gonna blend those students.
Mm-hmm.
Virtual hundred percent to the blended. That, again, that's what we've been asking for. I think Ms. Judith Freeman keeps saying it. We want creativity, we want innovation. This is the opportunity. Teachers have been so put in a box because we're teaching to the test. Well, there is no test right now, and we're teaching to this, and we're teaching to that. No, this is a time to be very creative for teaching and learning. So again, that's good to hear.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, are we doing anything with the media? Have we put anything in the newspaper? As a matter of fact, we probably should do a press release to let people know what it is that Trotwood Madison is doing on the twenty-sixth. And that way, all the media outlets can can get, help us to communicate that. Because, you know, there's some parents that just don't know. I mean, we may have called, all calls, all of those things. But I don't, I I wanna make sure we don't leave any stone uncovered. So if we haven't done a press release, let's get a press release out. If it's not on the social media outlets, let's make sure that it's there. In addition to that, um I've I've gotten all calls. So I know that the all calls are going out, which is really, really good, everything that it takes. And Ms. Bozeman mentioned that she got a call as a follow-up, and and that's really important. So it's so, I'm so happy to hear that we're following up with our parents, especially if we haven't heard one way or the other, if they've made a decision for what they want for their children.
And and it is being um announced on the TV stations. And as I said, um WDTN did run an article saying that we had put this information out. So we are um connected with the TV stations. And and so we're getting the same type of coverage that the other districts are about when we're returning to school. So we will continue it, as I said, it's it's never too much communication, so we will continue it.
The, the sixty forty percentage of kids that wanna come, or families that are coming back and staying virtual, is that one hundred percent student population? Or is that based off what the survey reflected?
Two schools um did not get um a hundred percent back. The Early Learning Center in both of the elementaries got um almost all of their parents contacted. The middle school and the high school, um not quite as much. I think it was seventeen percent that did not respond at the middle school. And um there was about the same percentage at the high school that did not respond. But based on, like I said, the trends of the other districts and the trending of what they did receive, that's how we came up with that. It's really like sixty forty for most there, for most of all of the buildings. And even though we didn't hear from seventeen percent of the students, that's still, I actually think I have those numbers. Um and it's, you know, like a hundred, a little bit more than a hundred students at the middle school that they were not able to contact, but they contacted a significant amount of their students.
And those families coming back, they they know what days they'll be attended, they know.
That information is all in the plan, and it's been going out on the letters to the um families. And so they're gonna know that their uniforms are optional this year. They can wear them, of course, but they're gonna be optional for the two days. Um they know that they will be getting um out that hour early to allow for interaction with the students who will be um one hundred percent virtual. Yes, they know if your um alphabet is A through J, you're coming in Monday, Tuesday. And if it's K through Z, you're coming in Wednesday, Thursday. If they have to change because of numbers, they would go on the oldest children, the oldest child's um, you know, schedule. That's where everybody would go. So they have a plan for those things. It is in our plan, and it is being communicated in a letter that's headed home to parents.
And and lastly, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Scares.
And if, in the event the governor closes schools down, we're ready to switch back on the, on the, okay?
That letter is going out on what day, Dr. Cosby?
I think it's, it should already be out. We were um tweaking it throughout the day today with the plan is that it goes out. So if it's not out, not first thing in the morning, I know that they have been, and like I said, we wanted it to be consistent. And like I said, we wanted it to be consistent. We wanted to make sure that there were these five things that were in each person's letter so that even though the letters aren't exactly the same, because of course, each building is a little different, we wanted to make sure that the information in the letters was the same. So I believe they may have hit send on it, but I don't want to say that if not, it'll be in the morning.
They'll go out tomorrow, wonderful. By the way, that information is not on Facebook. All right, so please make sure that we get the information on Facebook.
Okay.
And any other social platforms, media platforms that the district is on.
Ella's on it right now, it'll probably be on, up before our meeting is over.
Thank you, Ms. Valerie, I appreciate that. We trust, but we verify, all right? Just saying. I'm reading your letters. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'm sure those letters will be going out through final forms, um, Dr. Cosby. So when we say letters going out, we don't mean kind of snail mail. It means email message, an immediate message through our new um, enrollment and registration platform.
Okay, so the letters go out through what, what?
So final forms is the new um, registration process, it's the new enrollment process. Um, and there's a way for parents to um, receive communication that way as well. I know a lot of the schools send their newsletters out through final forms and things like that. So soon as they hit that send button, the letter can go out to everyone at school.
Mm-hmm, so we'll have something that tells parents that that information is there so that they know to go to the final forms.
Well, they get a prompt for final forms. It comes on, they, they get an email alert or a text alert, however they set it up in final forms to be alerted.
Okay, okay, wonderful. Yeah, we, we can talk about communication all day long and we still probably won't get it right.
Exactly.
However, we have to keep.
Keep working on it.
And yes, absolutely. So any other questions about the discussion items, Board? Okay, thank you, uh, Dr. Cosby, we appreciate the updates. Mm-hmm. And we continue to keep those on the agenda every meeting so that we can see where we are and, and how the progress is going. Next up, item is, next item up, I sent it backwards, is the treasurer's comment.
Yes, I wanted to uh, let the board members know that I had sent out the October treasure update. And I just wanted to just highlight two uh, events. One event, I happened to attend the Ohio Association of School Business Officials Leadership Conference yesterday and today. So very, very good information. They talked about leadership archetypes. And it's basically your type of um, management style and dealing with difficult um, people and their management style. So I thought it was very, very informative. And then tomorrow, I wanted you guys to know that I am the president of the Miami Valley um, School Business Officials this year. And tomorrow at one o'clock, we will be hosting at a two-hour workshop um, for thirty of our members. And Chris Moore, who is um, owner of K-12 Consulting, and Colleen Gallagher, who um, works for DataServe, will be um, our speakers for tomorrow. So I just wanted to let you know that. And there's some other information um, on that update as well.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Allen. Uh, superintendent?
Yeah, well, I want to congratulate Ms. Allen for being the president of the organization. And I think this really cool vest that she has on came along with that position. She has a vest that has it across the top, so congratulations on that. Um, I just want to say that, you know, um, as you know, this is something new to all of us. But I want to assure you that um, we couldn't care more about our students, we couldn't care more about our staff. And we're trying to do the best that we can. And it's a lot. I, I, I won't say that it's not, but I don't want you to think anybody is not working as hard as they can. We are, you know, working hour after hour. I, I believe that being on these virtual calls is, is more um, time-consuming and, and you, you know, you just book them eight o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, you know? And it's, and it's really a lot. And I want my staff to know that I appreciate them. Today, we actually had um, a little gathering, we called it Mask and Mingle, so that I would get an opportunity to meet some people at central office that I hadn't had a chance to because they, you know, work in a different area. Um, we're, we're doing it, they are doing so well. And I just wanted to say thank you. And thank you to my principals and to my teachers and, and staff all across. I mean, getting, getting together, the amount of food that we're distributing is a lot of work. Everybody is, is really killing it and I'm just going to say thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cosby. Any commit, board committee reports? If, if not, we'll move on down to the board comments. Uh, Mr. Andrews, please. I'm sorry.
I had trouble unmuting. Um, I, I don't really have any uh, any other comments other than the, the ones I've already made. Um, once again, I, I, I think this was a, um, a good meeting. And I think we got a lot of things kind of uh, uh, out, out and open and, and uh, got some clarification on some things and found that we need some, some work on others. So I think it was very productive, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Scares?
Thank you. I, I want to say thank you to Dr. Cosby and your staff and all of the teachers and staff within our district. I've said from the very beginning of uh, pleading the case of coming back into the district, there isn't any, there, any, there isn't any district uh, or any charter school or private school within our region that I feel can do it better than us. I think we have the best teachers, I think we have the best staff, the best administrators um, that can create the best environments to provide the best educational experience. And I still believe that. Um, and I just want to, I want to um, to acknowledge publicly to those teachers uh, that copied me um, on, on the emails of, of their concerns. Um, I did not think it was appropriate for me to, to return that message and overstep the superintendent. Um, but your, your concerns are warranted, um, they are legitimate. Um, but I, I pray that, that our staff and our teachers consider themselves some of the most essential staff um, uh, anywhere. And I just believe in the ability of our, of our staff and our stu- and our, and our teachers and things to create good environments and safe environments uh, to welcome our students back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
I don't have um, much, uh, just to thank all of the teachers and staff that are coming into the building every day. Uh, do appreciate you and appreciate you being there and uh, check on each other. And we all check on each other and make sure we're okay and stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman. Vice President Bozeman?
Um, the good thing about coming, um, when I get a chance to speak is that everyone says everything I was going to say. So yeah, everything we said, you know, I definitely want to say too. Um, absolutely, thank you for being here tonight, listening, for all your hard work. And I know you're going to kill it, like Dr. Cosby said, starting it out. Uh, Ms. Minor, when you gave us the information about the Black History Program, the notes I wrote down here were that this is really going to prepare our students who might want to do um, Black World Studies as a major. That, I know at Miami University, they had that as an actual major. So that would be, you know, really great for them to even funnel. They'll be prepared and ahead, you know, they'll walk right into that. So I thought that would be a great um, preparatory um, education for that. Other than that, thanks for being here and, you know, we're going to kill it.
Thank you, Ms. Bozeman. Okay, I've already said everything I was going to say, so that's how I figure, okay? I, there's nothing left, other than thank you, we appreciate you. Um, like Mr. Scares said, the emails that, from concerned staff, we hear you. That is being addressed one-on-one with the superintendent. Uh, we want to make sure that we, that you know that we care, we do care. We hear you, everything is case by case. We have done this thing very slowly and intentionally and deliberately to keep you safe and to keep our students safe. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Ms. Minor, for the presentation tonight, really appreciate that. Janice, looking forward to the retreat on the finances, that's going to be important. And congratulations on your position. We appreciate all you do. And everybody else around knows that we have the best treasurer in the county. I'm just going to say it, all right? So with that said, uh, thank you for being on with us tonight. Um, Ms. Cooper, our legal counsel, we appreciate that. Thank you for the explanation on the resolution order. And given that, again, the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have, okay, we get it. I got two, I got a, a motion and I got a second. Are there any questions or comments? Being that, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes, meeting adjourned. Thank you and have a great evening.
Bye.
Bye.